This conference will now be recorded.
Twenty-three, we all rise and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Member Hudson's vice chair Hudson's would like to.
Can I do the roll call over?
Oh, roll call, please. Yes, I did skip that part.
Member DeBaptiste.
Here.
Member Farber.
Here.
Member Varga.
Here.
Vice Chair Hudson's. And Chair Kerry. And then members Ray and Reiner are absent with notice.
Thank you. Vice Chair Hudson's would like to have the floor for a moment.
Yes, thank you for everybody being here today. I will be running for an open position on the town commission at the first of the year, and in the meantime, I have been appointed in a temporary position until the election. I'm only allowed to be on one commission at a time, and I want to let everyone know how much I've enjoyed the years I've been on planning this building. It's been fun. It's been a learning experience, and it continues to be one right through today. So that said, I believe we want the next time.
You're resigning.
Oh, that's right. That is correct. I want to submit my resignation at this moment as a vice chairman on this commission.
Thank you. We will miss having you here. Their gain is our loss. As a result of this, we now have an open position for vice chair, and I would like to suggest that we add to today's agenda as item number two after the approval of the minutes, a vote to replace Dave as vice chair.
Vice Chair, just for clarification, you're resigning from this board after today.
That is correct.
You're only resigning as the appointed vice chair by this board.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you. There's a lot of moving pieces here.
Yes.
So if we have a consensus to add an agenda item number two for vote for vice chair, and then move all the other agenda items down by one, or we can vote on it if anybody has a concern. But if everybody nods a consensus, we will do that after the approval of the minutes. Thank you. Next item is item one, approval of the meeting minutes from our meeting in October seventeen, twenty twenty-three. I assume everyone's had an opportunity to review them. Any questions or corrections?
There was one question that I had. It's on the page three. And it said, second paragraph, "Member Hudson's and Varga both expressly understood the resident's concern, nonetheless, project town requirements." And we're talking about the development on the Douglas extension on the lot. And one of the things that I had said was, the lot has two parcels, parcels A and B. And it is listed as a single lot, so I just ask if there could be a clarification so that if this is developed as two parcels, that the developer is in compliance with the town development rules. So I don't know whether any of that got done, but that was part of what I had said and asked for last meeting.
So would you like minutes to be modified to so note that?
I would appreciate it. I mean, I had it in my notes, so.
Then does anyone want to move that we accept the minutes as modified?
Yes, I'll move for accept the minutes as modified.
Okay, all approved.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Kerry, you missed public comments.
Yes, we did miss public comment, and that's important. So thank you.
You don't mind, do you?
Not at all. We like to get that out of the way.
I won't take much of your time. This has nothing to do with the applications that are pending for you today, except that we successfully modified codes to allow a redevelopment on this end of Old Ocean. There is a property at the other end of Old Ocean that needs to be reviewed by this board and by the commission, by the town attorney, by the town manager, and the building officials. Five oh one five is a duplex that's been sitting there, oh, since Christine Delorean moved out and died. It's a duplex. It's, in my opinion, almost an abandoned property. There's someone that's still owned it and lives in Boca, hoping that it could be sold. But he's been told, as I understand it, that he can't rebuild it because of the configuration of it and the way in which it sits on the property. I wish, and other citizens, not just me, that you would make a recommendation to the commission to have the town attorney, the building official, town planner, look at the property and see what can be done and what can't be done. You walk by there, you'll see it. You know what I'm talking about. Something needs to happen, even Mr. Varga knows. And that's what I'm requesting on behalf of many citizens. It's an eyesore. You can't even get the town to require the guy to paint the front of it. So I would appreciate if that goes in the record and gets delivered to the commission somehow. Somebody reviewed. It could be that you can't do anything. But someone needs to tell the citizens that, that it's been reviewed by the town, what can be done and what can't be done. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kerry. Anyone else want to take advantage of this time for public comment? This would be for anything that is not on today's agenda. Seeing that, we'll call public comment closed, and proceed to the vote for replacement vice chairman. Kelly, do you have some ballots for us?
I am passing around ballots, and there are three members that are on there. You pick one. And if we have a tie, then we'll do another ballot.
I probably should have taken a moment and described the role of the vice chair. Vice chair is the chair when the chair is not here. Right off. Thank you. Kelly, do we have?
Just a second. Okay, I think we have a winner here. I had Varga with one vote and Farber with four. So congratulations, Mr. Farber.
I'm sorry.
Did you hear that?
You're our vice chair.
Congratulations.
I understand what the job is.
Now we will proceed with the agenda, and if everybody will just kind of indulge that we actually have slid the numbers by one, but let's just go off the numbers on the agenda. So this would be the quasi judicial hearing for development plan review, twenty-seven Salfish Lane. And since this is quasi judicial, I need to read into the record and for all those present here that we're proceeding now, we're calling to order an agenda for this item. If anybody has had any ex parte communication, disclose so by identifying the subject communications and who you spoke to. So has anyone here on the commission spoken to anyone about this outside of this hearing? If they do, please disclose. Hearing done, we will go on. We will then proceed with the hearing on this matter. Will the town clerk please swear in the witnesses?
Will anyone wishing to speak on the item please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
When you are called forward, please state your name and address clearly for the record, and whether or not you've been sworn in, and please speak directly into the microphone.
Thank you. Now we'll have the town staff give their report, and that'll be followed by a presentation from the applicant. So, town planner, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Chair, board members. Court of Mormon Town Planner. This is the development plan review for twenty-seven Salfish Lane. The project includes demolition of the existing structure and construction of a new home, including three bedrooms, a den, four full baths, a garage, a pool, and a spa. The project is located in RMM zoning district. The RMM lot building requirements are applied. The single-family design requirements for the home itself in sixty-four dash one are also applied. The staff report recommends approval, subject to review, for the development plan review with conditions noted in the attachment. And that concludes the presentation. We're here to try to answer any questions if we can.
I just, this is a first application that I recall having done in the RMM. So we're doing a single family, I'm just kind of clarifying what you just said. We're doing a single-family home here, but it has more generous setbacks or narrower setbacks in some of the other requirements because it's in a multifamily zoning district. Does that help?
Well, the setbacks for the RMM are, some of the lot building requirements in general are different. The lot size, minimum seventy-five hundred square feet. Lot depth is a hundred feet. Lot width is seventy-five feet, of course. The front yard setback is fifteen feet, or I'm sorry, twenty-five. The sides are fifteen, and the rear is fifteen. There is a minimum lot coverage, or maximum lot coverage, of forty percent, and there is a floor area ratio of seventy-five percent for the second floor relative to the first floor. The RMM does not prescribe a maximum FAR, but it's sort of, if you go back into, because of the lot coverage and the maximum seventy-five percent for the second floor. So those are the lot building requirements on RMM. Then sections sixty-four, one, B through I, which address things like the building articulation, the windows and doors calculations. Those are also applied, even though this is in an RMM district.
So you can build on a smaller lot a little more densely because it's RMM?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate that thought, but it seemed different than what we're usually seeing. Right, the next staff report is from the building official?
There's nothing to report other than what. Thank you, zoning office for the town, and representing the building official as well. At this time, there is nothing to report other than what our town planner has reported on. No questions?
So it complies with all the requirements for?
Well, as far as zoning, yes. I reviewed that with our town planner and we came to the conclusion that we do recommend this. The building official has nothing concrete to report on until the subject matters is submitted to report as far as the particulars of the structure being built.
Thank you. And I understand, Kelly, you will be reporting for the town engineer?
Correct. Tara said she had no concerns for this property. Just what was in her report was pretty much how she had to stay. She was fine with the project.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff?
Well, I have a couple. One, is this project at all governed by the floor area ratios that we have for the town? Can your answer, I think, was no?
No, sir. That's correct.
And the setbacks we see are the setbacks for this particular area?
At this time, the applicant will make his presentation.
Good morning. My name is Carlos Bonita. I'm with Bonita for Arts Architecture. We are the architects designing the project for the reigning family. So I'm just going to try to be brief. I have three views here, three slides that I think condensate the project. So the first one that you see here is an aerial view of the neighborhood nearby. The street is Salfish Lane, and the house, the subject house is, if you can point it out. The next one? No, the next house.
The next one?
Yeah, the house is the one nearby that red dot. Up and then right.
Just the tan roof.
No.
Okay, the other right.
No, no. That one is.
That one? Okay.
That's the subject house. So the current house is a one-story house. And we're going to replace that house with a, almost in the same footprint, but with a new two-story house. We comply with all the requirements, the setbacks, the floor area ratio, especially for the second floor. And the footprint allows forty percent, and we are at, I think, twenty-nine percent. So it's significantly less than is required. So one thing that I want to point out in this picture is that we, in designing the single-family home, and kind of providing all the areas that the family expects for this new house, the major concern was to dedicate kind of like a nice backyard with a pool, so the family can enjoy the amenities of the new house. And in doing so, we looked into some existing solutions that were applied in the next street south. Come from the south. There's about three homes that has a similar design, where the house is set back towards the back of the lot, and the pool is on the front, in the front yard. That's one of the houses, yes. And then you keep going, right? Yeah, that's one. The next one. So it's three houses where, kind of new projects in that nearby street, single-family homes with the same kind of layout. You have to make your front yard your your area where you set up the pool and the social areas for the house. Unfortunately, that's the only way to accommodate a design that has that extra depth in the space to enjoy the pool and to enjoy, again, a nice social area for the house. So we can move on to the next slide. These pictures are taken on the Salfish Street. The center is the current house, which is going to be demolished. And the other two on the sides are the neighbor on the west and the neighbor on the east. Both are duplexes. And then right across the street, we have a single-family home. So the majority of the houses here are duplexes, and then there's a couple of some single families across the street. So this is just to give you a sense of how the street looks like. Next one. This is a view of those houses in the next street or towards the south that are new developments, where they try to use the lot as sufficient as possible. So that's why the pool, you see, is towards the front of the lot, the landscape, that front yard. And then you have kind of that deep sense of a patio courtyard that belongs to the house, but presents to the street in a very reasonable way because it's a landscape screen towards the street. So kind of a sample, just to put you in context of what we are trying to do with the new design. Next one, please. I think this is a very nice view of what the new project is going to be, the landscape color plan. So we are trying to put a lot of landscape around the house, create a hedge around the building, enclose the front yard where the pool is going to be located. That first room that you see there is the loggia, is a noise space. The gathering place for the family. And then on the back, again, it's pretty much what we're doing in these new homes, which is kind of like an open social space with a kitchen, the family room, and the dining room, with a little room on the left, which is the den, which is kind of like a flex room. It can be converted into a guest room because it has a bathroom there. We are also having to comply with the FEMA elevations for the new projects, and that pushes up the houses, and I think that's something that you have to deal in the future with the new home. This house is raised up to nine NBD, and the street is at four. So that's kind of like a neutral condition because obviously you don't usually have the street so low and the house so high. But I think we resolved it in a very clever way and within all the requirements that the town demand from the project. So the house is raised at nine. The garage door is lower, so the access, the ramp access, the driveway access from the street is very gentle. So the house is lower at almost five eight. That's why you see a stair going inside the garage into the main house. And then I guess we raise the grade in the back of the house just to put it lower than the main house. So I think we have some of the conditions that are imposed basically by the new FEMA minimum elevation. Okay, the next is? This is, if I can zoom out. It's kind of like I described. I call this the color and materials diagram. So it's kind of like a preview. We did a sketch. We're coming with the new 3D render by computer in the next phase. But this is just a sketch that we put together that give you a normal sense of the style of the house, very traditional, and the volume of the house, the pool in the front, the screen landscape around, the materials. I guess this is called West Indies style, which is very popular here in South Florida. So I guess this gives you a good description of what the project is about. We are going, we're moving towards more square openings rather than arch openings. So the only arch openings are in the center of the building, in the front entry, but the other big openings on the loggia, those now in the project are square openings. Next one. These are more technical. I think the last picture just showed what is the project about. These are more technical. The surveys, and we comply with the SEPTIC field. And I have here Matthew Khan, a civil engineer. If somebody has a question for him, he can answer. So we respond to all the concerns at the townhouse regarding the SEPTIC and the drainage of the lot. And I guess the rest of the company plans are more technical. We comply with the areas. That's the floor plan on the first floor. The second floor is complex with that limitation of being seventy-five percent. There's a terrace facing the front of the street that also comply with the renovation. The roof, and the pitch of the roof also complies. These are all the views around the house, and a small section through the middle of the house. Keep scrolling down. This is, it's a diagram that explains that we need the opening ratio of the windows and architectural elements in the elevation of what the code prescribed. So it's kind of like a correlation between what the code wants and what we have provided. I guess this elevation here, that the front elevation of the house facing the street, that's where you see that the openings, the majority of the openings in the house are square openings, and the only round openings is the one that marked the axis of the house, the main door, the main porch, all those are arch openings. I think that's it. Unless you have any question, I can.
Can you walk us through the landscape plan? Kelly, can you go back to that one? I think currently there's pretty good separation and screening between the houses on either side of the current house. So how do you, what's the landscaping intended around the border here?
Yes, so in the front, towards the street, we have a retaining wall that allows to raise the front yard of the house by the allowable minimum, which is four feet. And there's going to be kind of like a green hedge right in front of that retaining wall. So it's two layers of green hedge. The first one will cover the retaining wall. The second one, which is in the back of the retaining wall, is higher and creates that screen closure, a green screen closure. That hedge is meant to be at least five feet. And so that five-feet hedge, landscape material, plant hedge goes all around the lot.
How big's the retaining wall, real quick, just as you asked? How tall's the retaining wall?
The allowable height that we need to do is about four feet. That's the maximum, and we have to comply with that. We can probably lower if we want. But the idea is to have that retaining wall only on the front, because that's the only way also we can achieve raising the house to nine NBD and keep the street up. Because the street is at four, there's nothing we can do about that. And we have to meet those requirements. Those are. We cannot lower the house anymore. So that's a strategy that, again, the other houses in the other three, in the other street, they are moving towards that strategy to comply with that requirement. So you see the hedge, the landscape hedge is all around the lot. There's some portions, like for example, on the left in front of that den space, there's a sliding glass door that has a kind of like a bigger sliding looking west. That hedge on that south part is even higher than the other ones. The other ones, the height is five feet hedge around. That in particular is a little bit higher because we want to create more privacy on that room. So that hedge, which is slightly light green, is eight feet high. And then as you move around, the other side of the house, which is more kind of like the social, where the social areas are, for the enjoyment of those social areas, those have more trees. You see all the separate trees along that east side of the lot. So it's a combination of having the screen, the green screen fence, like we told, with a combination of trees that are higher, lower, kind of creating a more variety of landscape on the west, on the east of the house. landscape on the west, on the east of the house. That's also the place where we have a spa. So the loggia, which is the, the space on the southeast corner, is a non AC space. It has two views, one view of the spa and all the landscape that surrounds the spa, which is the, the blue, small pool, that you see there. And then the pool right in the front of the main opening of that space, which is a combination of the, the, the blue water and in the background, we have, um, some, um, trees and a hedge. It's kind of like the background of the view of the main social space of the house. And we go around, we create, um, uh, the access of the house is through, um, a gate, two piers that again, we, we are allowed to, two piers that are only four feet high and then a, a main wood gate that, uh, give you the access to that, uh, pool deck. That's near the garage, between the garage and the main, uh, entry porch. So, um, that also is going to be, uh, it's going to have some, uh, landscape hedges on either side. Um, and that's, um, we have to accommodate that, uh, stair, those steps that you climb up to that log gate, you open the gate, then you are in the, in the private, uh, courtyard.
Thank you. Uh, this is the opportunity for, uh, the commissioners to ask any questions they have on the applicant. Steven, you have any?
For me, no. Like the house, small lot, really nice execution. I think it's a pretty good house here. For me, I like it.
David?
Yeah, I think I like it pretty well. Uh, to add some questions, um, we've got a garage and it looks like we have space for one other automobile in front of the garage. The, uh, the drive seems to extend around to the west side of the house. That's probably inadequate for another automobile, is that correct?
Yes, that, that was the intention, intention. I think the regulation asks us to, uh, provide one interior garage space, um, minimum of 20 by 10, which we provide inside the house. And then as, we have enough space to provide another parking space outside, so, so that, uh, area that is big on the west side of the garage, is that additional exterior parking space?
Okay, that's a good answer to my question. Um, you've indicated that you're going to have to build the property up to be compliant. Um, it might have been good, because I don't think I saw one, to have a rendering of your house with the, there's homes on either side of this, to see what it would look like. I wouldn't say that that in any way disqualifies you, but that's kind of what we wanted all along, because we want to see outfits in with the existing homes. So, and then, um, finally, I did have a question about the roof. It looks like in the schematic that the roof, uh...
Uh, the, the corner elevation.
Okay, and one more, a little more. Okay, that's good. It's just, so that, uh, we, we have a steep pitch and then we have a change in the pitch, which I think we, we addressed that, that in a previous meeting.
We were talking about that because we have these two different pitches and we have to have either flat roof or rubber and then this is, what's the, what's the minimum pitch on the little piece there?
That was a comment and we replayed, uh, four, four twelve, that's it.
Oh, that's the low one. And then the other ones?
I think it's seven, uh, seven, right? Yes, uh, there's, there's, uh, that's a typical, um, way to resolve these traditional homes in the West Indies. The, the house was going into the, the, s- s- steep, uh, pitch to the wall and when hits the exterior wall, the pitch can switch to a higher, uh, so it can provide more shadow to the, to the window.
So is, is that change, that reduced pitch, basically over the socket?
Yes.
On the, on the, sorry.
And it's a four, it's a four pitch, so that's a lot in the town. They were saying that's weird because, or I think we were talking about this, something funny in the Coles, there's so much to make that a three pitch instead of, you know, for that little piece instead of a three pitch, but he's, he, he come that up. He doesn't really qualify to have it, he's got legal pitches, basically, on fourth floor.
It looks good. Thank you.
Shields?
Uh, I support it, looks very nice.
Thank you. And Mark?
I think it looks nice as well and I just wanted to know, is that the green area, um, the light green area, is that sod, uh, grass, actual grass or is it astral turf?
Yes, the, the, towards the back of the house is actual grass, toward the front of the house, I think some areas are, um, uh, artificially grass.
We allow artificial grass?
In, in the rear, where it's not seen from the, uh, from the street up to a certain percentage.
That's not for drainage, yeah.
Yeah, we don't, don't allow it in front yards, though there's a few grandfathered in, um, in the town.
Great, thank you.
Uh, I have a question, partially staff, partially, so following up on Dave's question about how many off-street vehicles can be parked on this, on, onsite?
So onsite?
Including the garage?
I, I think three vehicles, probably.
Three vehicles?
Yes.
It's not wide enough to do two there in the driveway?
I think the driveway, the driveway, I, if I'm not mistaken, is eighteen. So if, if it's eighteen, um, feet wide, you can eventually park, yeah, eighteen eight.
So you could get two in there snugly?
Yeah.
And, and, uh, this is, kind of gets to comment for staff, uh, as they, these, both the applications we're seeing today are on streets that are rather narrow and we want, really don't want to put a, a burden on the street for parking. Uh, so we want to try, I don't know what the, uh, the requirement is, because in our other districts, you have to have a two-car garage minimum, is that correct?
Uh, yes, sir, on lots that are less than 10,000 square feet, um, the requirement is one parking space. In, in this case, the, uh, the project complies with the one parking space by having the one garage space. However, um, as you've noted, there is a, a space, an exterior space to the side of the garage and the ability of parking two cars, uh, not needing the, the minimum requirement necessarily, uh, for a parking space, but at least sufficient width to have two additional spaces, um, in the driveway, you know?
Good, uh, and then this gets, uh, I think we're done with questions for you, so thank you very much. I appreciate your answers, you did a nice presentation. I've got kind of a global question, uh, again for staff, uh, that applies to both of these and this has to do with, uh, fire access. Do these get reviewed by, uh, the fire department and all? I know I put application in before Point Beach and when you sit down for a preliminary review, the fire chief is right there and making his comment right off the bat. In both of these streets, we have to be very cautious about fire access and, uh, and that's one of my questions about, uh, parking. Is fire get involved in, in our reviews?
No, sir, not at this stage. Uh, there is this initial review done by the building official, uh, although there, at least to my knowledge, there's no review done by the fire department.
Sailfish is tricky. It's a dead-end street with the dogleg entrance and, and narrow. So we have to do things, this won't be the last application we see on Sailfish and we want to make sure that the street is clear in case of an emergency. It's, uh, and if we, if you think as staff that our code doesn't address that well enough, maybe we need to, as a commission, look at that and make sure we, make sure all these homes are able to retain their parking within their property and keep the street clear. It, it's important, we hate to see, uh, a problem occur. Nice, nice job on the application, thank you. Now we have the opportunity for public comment, is there anyone from the public that'd like to comment?
Mr. Brown? Uh, this may seem surprising, but, uh, my wife and I, Lucy, lived on Sailfish for seven months while our house was being rebuilt. So we know the street, Lucy walked that dog back and forth at least a hundred times a day and we know all the structures. This, uh, uh, structure is being built on the side of the street that has three or four duplexes. So it kind of, um, there, there's a lot of not fitting in and does fitting in. I mean, it's a nice structure and it'll be quoted improvement, even though it'll be larger than most of the structures on that side of the street. Uh, and again, I, I, I wanted to comment on the pool in the front. I assume that's an administrative, uh, approval without a variance. I know that on Fayette, there's pools in the front of, right up against the, um, um, property line. So is that what happens? It gets approved automatically because of the rear setback is so short?
Mr. Chairman, the, uh, the town code allows pools in front yards.
And that would be in, uh, into all districts?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good to know.
Uh, we had one on our street too, but they mowed the house down and put it in. But I'm glad you brought up the, the street, uh, because we lived on the corner where the, all of the garbage trucks have to back in and this, uh, three times a week, the minimum. They back all the way down and then they come up. So no on-street parking is permitted during the day even, because your car will get wiped out. But the, the other problem with the road, as you point out, it has that immediate curve, is that the road is deteriorating and I don't know who's responsible for taking care of the road. There's part of the asphalt is missing. And with these trucks, with demo trucks and construction and garbage trucks, it's going to be a mess if someone doesn't repair that road, take a photo of it now, demand that the contractor has a bomb in case there's damage by their vehicles, which happened on our street, but the contractor paid to repair the road. Thank you.
Any other, uh, public comment?
Yeah.
I do have a, you know, one.
Seeing none, we will, okay, oh, we have a.
You have one.
Thank you.
Um, I am unable to attend the meeting on December 19th regarding 27 Sailfish Lane. Wanted to mention a concern regarding our street and the fact that it's a dead end without proper turnaround. Just want construction vehicles to be aware of this, as does often pose a problem. I am at 1921 Sailfish Lane and my front yard takes the brunt of the trucks and vans that come down the street and can't seem to figure out how to turn around. Is there anything that can be done to make drivers aware would be very appreciated? Not only during this construction, but on a regular basis. Thank you, Colonel Brantley.
It's a good comment and that's a question, we don't have anybody from the police department here, but, uh, in permitting a project like this one, uh, I don't think there's really room for construction vehicles there. How, how is that handled?
Mr. Chairman, uh, the, uh, the building official at, at the time of the permitting process will review that and will have a pre-conference construction meeting with, with the contractor, especially in view of the fact that it's such a, a narrow street. He's going to have to probably find a parking area for his, for his workers and stuff and then, uh, um, bring them in, uh, as a single vehicle. As far as the construction vehicles, only those that would be, you know, at that time would be allowed these things and not on the, on the street.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, closed public comment, this is an opportunity for staff if there's anything that needs to be added. Seeing, seeing none, uh, we will, uh, close this and give it open to deliberation and motion by, uh, the commission.
You continually bring up, you continually bring up the parking issue in these smaller lots and I do think it's something that we need to, or the commission needs to look into, because there's no way a three-bedroom home plus a potential four-bedroom here can park here. And, uh, and we keep forcing this issue and the parking will be on the street. There's no other way from that, right? I don't know. So I think it's a good, it's a good agenda item, uh, for the, uh, for the commission going forward, yeah.
On this, on this dead-end street, it's, it's, it's a safety issue. It really is. Right? Is anyone here to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the application.
Uh, and the motion includes, uh, the incorporation of staff comments?
Including staff comments, please.
Thank you. All in favor? Uh, any opposed? Seeing none, uh, your project is passed. Thank you.
Rick, I just, just to, for clarity, there was, the, the, the staff comments were all, um, addressed, right?
So there, there are staff comments in the engineering, uh, letter that, uh, that need to be incorporated?
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, so we're ready to proceed with the next agenda item, which is the quasi-judicial, uh, hearing and development plan review for 6073 Old Ocean. Um, and, uh, I remind the commission that this is quasi-judicial. Uh, does anyone have any ex parte communication that they would like to disclose?
Uh, yes, I, I do. I reached out to the owner, Mr. Pappas, to understand, there's been a lot of history on this project and I, I was trying to get a little clarity and I reached out to him directly to ask him the history since he acquired the property going forward.
And is there a- anything about that conversation that you should share?
Uh, not that I, nothing more than him explaining to me the history and, uh, and sharing with me the plans of going to see that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Um, we will now proceed with the hearing on this matter. Town clerk, please swear in witnesses.
Well, anyone wishing to speak on the item, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do, I do.
When you are called forward, please state your name and address clearly for the record and whether or not you've been sworn in, please speak directly into the microphone.
Now we give the, uh, planning staff an opportunity to, uh, give their report. We will start with Cory.
We want to share with our members, Cory of Mormon Town Plan, uh, this is the development plan review for 6073 Old Ocean. Uh, this is for the demolition of the existing structure, construction of new home, uh, two stories, uh, with four bedrooms, a den, uh, uh, one office, four baths, uh, four full baths, two half baths, two garage, uh, swimming pool, outdoor living area. Uh, this is some of the R S E, um, and, uh, is reviewed in accordance with, uh, section 641 for the R S E zoning district. In addition, I just point out that there have been several recent code amendments that, uh, have addressed both the usable lot area, um, as well as some of the lot building requirements. Uh, there's an amendment to the code that, uh, as you may recall, um, previously, uh, for lots that have let the ocean, the lot area to be calculated would only be that lot area landward of the coastal construction control line. Uh, the amendment deleted that section of the code, so the entirety of a lot can be considered for a lot coverage and floor area ratio. Additional revisions, uh, to, uh, section 641 include making all of the lots between, uh, Anna and Corinne conforming with the town codes as they currently exist and providing accommodation for, um, setbacks, uh, with setbacks applying to the first floor, uh, additional setback applying to the second floor, um, some, um, lesser setbacks than the R S E currently provides for the front yard, um, and then establishing the coastal construction line as the setback line for the primary structure, uh, to the water. Um, eastward or seaward of the coastal construction line allows accessory structures and structures that are not having. The, um, uh, the revisions also limit, uh, to, uh, 28% lot coverage and, uh, 32% of floor area ratio over the, the lot itself. Uh, this project has been reviewed and been, um, with respect to those requirements and complies with, um, the town code for zoning as well as, um, the site development and staff is recommending approval with conditions noted. Um, I, I, just to point out to you from the zoning perspective, uh, the only item, uh, in the last review that you couldn't tell was in conformance with the code, was for the north and the south elevations for the articulation and just noted that the, uh, request of the applicant provide, um, a, a revised plan at an appropriate time to ensure that, uh, the articulation requirement is complied with for both the north and south elevations. with for both the north and south elevations. Once again, we do recommend approval and are happy to try and answer any questions if we can.
You went through quite the list of things that are different about this particular overlay from the residential single-family. The one that I'm, that I want to hear again is side yard setbacks. Are they the same as the residential single-family elsewhere in the, in the town or different?
The side yard setbacks for the interior are 10 feet for the first floor, 15 feet for the second floor for the revisions. The RSE district is 15 feet for the side yard.
So the first floor is, so there's 10 versus 50?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for clarification. Does the building and zoning official have any comments?
None at this time.
And Kelly acting for the town engineer?
She said that basically her comments are in the, the report. She said the only concern that she still had was with the landscaping of the drainage. She said it does need to be reviewed more in detail again. But she said everything else she was fine with.
Thank you. Now we'll give the applicant an opportunity to present the project.
Thank you very much, Randall Stott. Randall Stott Architects, 42 North Swinton Avenue, Delray Beach. And I have been sworn in. Well, nice to see you all. It's been a long time coming. This, you know, this project we've been working on for quite some time. Most of you probably know Todd. He's a longtime Ocean Ridge resident. And he's also a, a good Chicago guy like myself. So he grew up with really fine architecture and architects. And so he appreciates, you know, well, well-executed architecture. And I think we're here today to present one. Although this house is a modest house by ocean standards, we've worked very hard to make it a jewel box and a, a very special house for Ocean Ridge. A few of the highlights are the fact that the house is set back approximately twice as far as the other houses on that street. As you know, that street is narrow and a little treacherous. It slopes substantially from side to side and front to back. So we've actually pushed the house back to the new setback and the garage is actually further back. So we're able to attack a two-car garage plus two cars parked it on the property away from the street as opposed to what was there where everybody was parking on the street. A little bit on the architecture. It's a tropical modern structure. We should probably, probably put, put up the front elevation. Tropical modern structure. It, its massing is a single, single story, side to side, front to back with the two-story element more towards the center. This particular massing is sensitive to both our neighbors on the right and left. Also, our neighbor to the west will have peek-a-boo views to the ocean. So we think it's very sensitive to, to the entire neighborhood and Ocean Ridge in general. It's going to be a very high-quality residence. It'll be clad almost completely in limestone. We better go back to the elevation. But it'll be, we do have some cypress wood style elements as highlights and some control devices, some powder-coated aluminum overhangs which have wood cladding underneath. So one thing to know about this street, when you're walking along, it's not really roof architecture. You're actually looking up at it. So it'll be very attractive for the passerby. It's create great shadow lines. And like I said, they use a very, very high-quality materials. Also, there's an existing wall, as you guys probably know, along the street. We are rebuilding that to make it structurally sound and we are cladding that with a shell, a Saint Augustine shell, which I have hired copies of all the samples, which gives a beautiful texture and peachy kind of a feel to the oceanfront residents. It's also nice for people walking by and creates a really, just a beautiful backdrop to the limestone. As I stated, both, we didn't, you know, both the front and rear of the house are clad with limestone. We did add limestone based on the city's comment about the side elevations, although it was really the low, the side elevation on the single-story section, which will never be seen. But we have addressed that and added more limestone and cladding on the sides. A little bit on the landscape architect. Like, he's not here today, but I do have the civil engineer. Something about this project, because it's very tight, we work very closely with septic drainage. Our simple landscape architect and myself to be able to put an excessive amount of landscape for a lot this size. A little bit, the trees required on this site are six. We're proposing 26 trees. Our shrubs requirement is 36. We're proposing 177 shrubs. And they're, they're fairly mature also. So we're not just putting in little, the little stuff. And it sounds easy, but it's tricky the way we created the drainage and the, you know, the trench drains and trench drains. So we work closely with our engineer, with myself and with the landscape architect to really create a project that we believe will be a, a great addition to Ocean Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also have hired copies of any of the materials if anybody wants. Ask for it.
Commissioner, questions? We'll start at this end and Marko first.
I think it looks terrific. No questions.
Hey Randy, I see on one of your elevations you have a, it looks like it tucked the generator down inside the building. Can you just elaborate on that briefly, please?
So it's basically a pocket in the side that we're putting the, you know, putting the generator under and it not only will protect it, but it gets it out of any eyesight.
Yeah, very nicely done. It's all of that.
Thank you.
I think it looks terrific. I do have some questions about setbacks because I wasn't certain which setbacks we're using.
So the setback, the front setback is 25 feet, which the, the one portion, the front vertical portion is on the 25-foot setback. But we set the garage back a little further, I think two or three feet, so we could comfortably get cars parked in front of it.
And how about the sides?
Sides are 10 for the single story and 15 for the two-story. They're actually a little more on the second story, but the, the single story elements are at the 10-foot setback.
So probably, I'm unclear what we're currently requiring on that. I'm not.
10, 10 feet is required.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Even?
Beautiful house, great execution. I mean, yeah, what can you say? Beautiful. Not much to say. Wow.
Just one question or suggestion that'd be, Randall, if you could step forward. And you recently completed 54 Spanish River Drive, which Mr. Bargo constructed?
Yes.
One of the elements they did to, or you did there with the owner, to alleviate street parking is you put a little extra to the side of the driveway. So a vehicle that maybe is not used every day can kind of go in there at a 90-degree, kind of in the area on this drawing of where your gas propane tank is.
Yes.
You know, I, I've found that the more expensive the home, the more cars people tend to have. And there's a real tendency in Florida as a whole, in Ocean Ridge in particular, of not using the garage for parking as much. And, you know, I've already seen this at 54 Spanish River where the driveway is jammed even with the extra space. So I would suggest you sharing that with the owner and considering a little extra pavement in that area.
I don't think he'd be opposed to that. I'd say it's a civil engineering question and we'll be happy to talk him out about accomplishing that.
It's a, it gives some options.
Got it.
You know, and this is a street that you really don't want overflow parking onto the street if you can any way avoid.
No question.
Thank you. And you addressed that right out the gate, that you knew that was.
It's key. And, you know, we're also working with the, the spellments, the contractor about staging and, and everything. So we will have that all worked out to the benefit of the neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Time for public comment?
Terry Brown. Just a quick comment regarding your parking. They're going to park on the street in front of the wall. This, everyone does that all the way along there. And, and vehicles can get by. It's a one-way street. The, the other question is regarding the garage and the elevation of the garage related to the street. According to the drawings, it's almost the same height. So where is the water going to go that's heading towards the garage doorway? Is there a drain there?
There's a trench drain.
There's a trench there because, believe me, we've seen 10, 12 inches of rain on that road and it's not pretty. Thank you.
Thank you. Any last staff comments? With that, we'll close the public hearing and give the commission an opportunity to make comments or motions.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Subject to staff.
Subject to staff.
Conditions.
Conditions.
Thank you.
Second thought.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cory.
Kelly, would you present the meeting minute dates that you proposed on item number four?
Yes, I just wanted to let you know this is what, according to our normal meeting dates going forward to the next year. Just want to make sure everybody's okay with it. If we got any changes that you guys would recommend. If not, that's what will be posted on the website. And, that's it.
Thank you. Does anyone have conflicts or issues with these dates?
I have a conflict for January. I've been sick this time. It's the only one I know about.
Okay. We know that Sydney will not be here in January. Mark, are you available in January?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We can act with a quorum of three, but it's, you know, the purpose is bodies to deliberate and, and it's much better to have four or five. Stephen, you're good in January? We'll.
I believe so, but I get away when I can. So, yeah, I disappear when I can. So when there's a love blank spot in my, my world there, I've, I've been known to disappear. I will, I believe I'm here. I don't have any plans for anything, but I will probably find my way around.
We, we will be short one through April. When, so Dave's leaving. Mark is going to have a seat here virtually every month. And, and so I'm glad Shields has brought it up. I don't see moving the January date, but rather being aware of it, especially Kelly's part, maybe you can get ahold of our other alternate and see if we can get an absolute commitment for January. Do we know anything about, you said there's people that want to be on this agenda. So clearly there's some stuff coming up in January.
Correct. I had you wind up that I wanted to be in January's.
All right. Well, that noted, we'll proceed and, you know, hopefully we can get four present here for next month. Thank you. Next agenda item. I lost my agenda. Dave, what's the next agenda? Okay, Shields has it. Yeah. I'll turn to you now, here in the vice chair.
Code amendment.
Okay, we've got proposed code amendment and permit fees. Who's presenting that?
I am, Mr. Chairman. So as you may recall, back in October, we talked about this issue that had come up a couple times at the town commission meetings. And it's Section 67-58 regarding doing work without permits and the penalty under the town's code. And basically, what we've found over time is, is two issues. One, the provision in subsection C dealing with imposition of the penalty that since most jobs are over $5,000 in cost, you're looking at a four times the penalty every time someone does work without permits, which is a bit excessive under the Florida building code. It's, it's, it's two times if you're caught doing work without permits. The other thing that we have experienced at town commission level is under subsection D, it talks about a refund of your building permit fees. And I believe the intent was if you decide not to move forward with your building permit and how you can make your fees refunded. Well, it's kind of been interpreted over time that anyone who pays a building permit fee, whether it's a penalty or not, can come before the town commission and request a waiver or a reduction. And that resulted in a lot of people coming before town commission, which, you know, as you know, it, it causes a lot of staff time. The staff has to review a creative agenda item and code for town commission. And then it takes up the town commission's time that otherwise might be on town business. So we proposed some changes. And what the changes would do to, would be to revise subsection C to create a penalty structure where the first offense, it's similar to the Florida building code, you would pay double your permit fee. Future offenses, the, the scale would go up for paying a triple and equitable your permit fees. It also clarifies in language that we've added, oftentimes what happens is we use our component, which is called community standards, when we discover someone doing work without permits. So I just wanted to also clarify that in addition to the building official being able to assert a penalty for work without permits, the town could also seek to go through its community standards process to enforce that provision. And then finally, in subsection D and a new subsection E is to clarify that the reduction or return of fees in subsection D is really the only area that the town will consider returning someone's permit fees. And that that will now be done through the administrative official. So it removes the, the responsibility from the town commission so that they're not spending a lot of time on individual requests for waivers. And it also limits the request for reduction if you're not going to move forward with your, your project. So those are the basic changes that I've made. And I'm happy to answer any questions or take further comments and concerns.
Commissioner, questions or comments?
Remember, we talked about this in October. So this looks like a good way to get it out. You don't want the commission dealing with this, right? Certainly, right? And, but the fee, the purpose of the fees are to support the staff who works and reviews everything, right?
Correct, correct.
That's like the purpose of the fees. That's really what the purpose of the fees are, right?
Yes. And by, and by the statute, we're required to use those fees that come in specifically for the building department only.
So the only question I'd have is the staff has done their job and reviewed everything and then the applicant withdraws their, 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 their application. The work has already been done. Why would you give a free refund, anything?
And that's certainly.
They've done, they've done the work, right?
And that's certainly a good comment. I think the way that subsection D is set up is that you can get back, you can't get back 30%. is that you can get back, you can't get back 30%. And then there's a timeframe to request the refund.
Yes.
So it ensures, that language ideally ensures, I can't speak. Our town clerk knows this a lot more intimately than I do, but it ensures that the initial work the town does gets covered.
Okay, okay. That'd seem like a lot, but I admire. Thank you.
So maybe we can certainly review those percentages and if the town staff that deals with them on a daily basis feels that they need to be increased percentage-wise, that's something we can certainly look at.
There's just these two applications today. One was very simple. I know the other one, the town has spent a huge amount of time on and the staff has spent a huge amount of time on, right?
Yes.
So if they pulled their application and want to get their fees, it seems unfair or not balanced.
So what we could do is if this commission wants us to, we can go back and look with staff and make sure that subsection D ensures that the town has paid for all of its review and work that's done, any application that's submitted.
It's a good suggestion.
It's a good suggestion, my word, yeah.
Unless it's an accounting nightmare.
Yeah.
We'll talk with Jean.
I'm blocking accounting nightmare.
What's staff one? I mean, we're really here to try to do two things. I've sat in many commission meetings where the people are coming in and begging the elected officials for money back and that's not a good thing. Carolyn knows that. We want to get away from that. And then the other is that we want to make sure the town is reasonably compensated for its time.
Well, there's another, also the other issue is we have to pay, it's called DCA and depending on when that falls, if we've taken a permit at one point and it falls over like close to the end of the month, we have to turn those fees into the state. So there's fees that we're already missing as well. So whether that's accounting when they, you know, did it previously, 30%, as well as the staff time that's been put into reviewing it, I don't know. It is something I would have to check with Jean and see how this, because sometimes if it's the beginning of the month and they pay these fees and, you know, we haven't paid that yet, it's easy enough to return. But if it's towards the end of the month and it overlaps that time and they ask it for, you know, 60 days afterwards, we're having to then give back money we've already paid to the state and we're not getting it back. So I'd have to check with her and see if that amount plus our staff time would equal that every time.
I just don't want to put the burden on you to have to do calculations and produce a receipt for staff time. It'd be nice to have a number that's a good number. And I don't know whether 30% is that good number or not. It sounds low.
It sounds low, but it sounds like something at least where you just, hey, you lose 30% day one, you know. You know, if you want to talk to the staff about the balance of it, I just think that that would be a somewhat of a fairer, excuse me, balanced approach.
Mr. Chairman, I think Shields made a good point on this. And are we benchmarking from other towns and municipalities on what they do as part of this plan?
I had not.
Okay, so we created this internally as opposed to looking, I mean, there's.
I believe so. I don't know. I didn't start.
I think I'd just go to like, you know, Delray, West Palm Beach, Gulfstream and see what they do. I mean, we're recreating a.
Couple and the one that I checked with, they don't refund at all.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of that.
Me too.
Yeah, it's, especially if you file that whatever it was, DCA or, and we're out the money. So, yeah. This is missing a timeline in it. You know, you can, this could be read that you could come back. Maybe it says within 60 days, excuse me.
I mean, if an architect's hired and they decide not to go forward with the project, does the architect give their money back? I don't think so. Right? So what's the difference? The work has been done.
So I think it becomes weird. So we do have a whole lot of other staff time during the construction. You know, we have inspections, we have paperwork, we're dealing with, you know, so we're using a lot more staff time during construction. And yes, you know, I don't know what 30% is, but I'm sure the permit for this house can be well over $50,000 or $60,000. So, you know, they're getting, you guys are getting that back. We also have review fees for the, you know, to come in front of the P and Z here and things like that. But I think you guys should figure it out, make sure we're not getting cheated. But yeah, it's, you know, I understand. You're spending all your time, everybody's spending all their time and then they're like, oh, we don't want to do. You know, I have customers that come, they, oh, let's start doing something. Oh, wait, I changed my mind. I don't want to do it. It's like, gee, I've spent, I've spent six months with you guys doing all this and now you decide you don't want to build a house. And that's my life too. So I'm good for you guys.
I'm a person that prefers to get something before us, make a decision and move on. But I think the consensus here is to do a little more homework and make sure we're making the right decisions. So if you don't mind, do it, do a little more homework, come back. And if staff is satisfied with this, you know, we're here to endorse and support you. This is really to be a supportive view of the commission. And that gets to my only comment down here at the end, D1. It seems like all this is to get it, keep it from going before the commission. And then here it says, but the commission can refund the money if they choose to, which seems like to open the door to people coming back to the commission if they don't think they got enough. You know, is there, does this give them a right to go before the commission, just like they can now?
Well, the change I made was to delete the town commission in subsection D1 and put in the administrative official, which is usually the building official, so that there's, they don't have a right to go to the commission.
Okay.
Now, you can always appeal a decision of a building official, but that's a different story.
So it's not, they don't have a right, which they do today.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see if we can get this back to us next month and we'll endorse what you want.
That's good.
And that brings us to, I found it and lost it again. Here we go. The roof heights discussion. And is that, who is leading that? Is that you, Corey?
Yes, sir. Chair, board members, Corey O'Wormand, town planner. This is a follow-up item also from the October meeting and you may recall that this was generated, so to speak, by the architects of the proposed home that's currently in design at Seven Sable Island Drive. They're interested in proposing a roof slope of three and 12. And the current code either allows a sloped roof between four and 12 pitch and 14 and 12 or a flat roof. So there's no provision in the code currently to allow anything less than a four and 12 unless you do a flat roof. And you may recall that we looked at several different elevations of the roof that at least was in concept at the time for the Seven Sable Island Drive house as well as several others. And the discussion with the board was to come back to you with some proposed language that could allow a three and 12 pitch under some special conditions, so to speak. So the agenda item, we at least hope reflects that desire. We've included some proposed language additions to 64.1, paragraph F1, that specifically talks about the roof pitch where single-family homes are permitted, as I mentioned, a four and 12 to a 14 and 12. But then the additional language is at least proposed to read, the planning and zoning commission may approve a pitched roof minimum of three and 12 as a special design exception, subject to development plan review criteria 6356, including the standards that are in the previous pages and highlighted. And those were highlighted only because those, at least in my review, appeared to relate more to the design of the building and its compatibility with other structures, with the existing neighborhood, as it were. So the language was intended to give the planning and zoning board the ability to approve a three and 12 if in your judgment it met those standards. And of course, if it did not, then you would not be obligated to approve that three and 12 roof. So offer that for your consideration, your comments, any changes, any thoughts, and at your pleasure, a recommendation to the town commission.
Questions?
Being the novice here, building height requirements, is that from the pitch of the roof or the even roof?
The overall height is to the pitch.
So this would give the applicant additional interior height possibly with a three 12.
I don't think so. I think it would be just the opposite.
It would be the opposite.
Yeah, because you, overall, you'd be, you'd be, you're the.
Be able to go up higher with a floor pitch.
The height measured to the beam, the second, the first floor or second floor beam. So then the roof pitch is measured from, from the beam to the overall height of the roof, to the pitch. Or I'm sorry, to the peak of the roof. So with a lower pitch, unless you have a very large home, which you certainly could, the overall height, I don't think would change dramatically, but I think that would be on a case-by-case basis.
It's just yours.
As I recall, we had this with the flat roof and it's the tie beam that sets the height. So a flat roof house right now can't be as tall. And it was a concern of ours. We didn't want 35-foot flat roof houses and we used the tie beam. So the same criteria would apply, I believe, right?
Yeah, I would.
You asked the question before I did. We don't want this to make taller houses appear taller.
Right.
Shields?
Is the, oh, excuse me, are we getting away from, are we trying to create a specific item in the ordinance here instead of letting this go to the, you know, the other board that looks at these kind of matters? Is that what we're trying to, what are we trying to accomplish here? We trying to carve this out a little bit? Is that what we're trying to do, Corey?
Yes, sir, to enable the planning and zoning board to, to allow some flexibility for design issues, which really does fall under the purview of the development plan.
Okay.
The Board of Adjustments wouldn't be allowed to look at this because this wouldn't be considered a hardship.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Also, it has to either be allowed here, allowed here by special exception, or not allowed. Right now, it's not allowed.
Yeah. I support them with the direction we're going here then.
Is there any reason why you can't just say people can do this if they design it and it doesn't need to come before the board just because of the roof pitch?
If that's the desire of the planning and zoning board.
I'm just asking a question.
No, I don't think so. I mean, it's purely a local option sort of thing, if you will. Currently, your regulations in Ocean Ridge restrict the minimum roof slope, four-sloped roof to four and 12. If you wanted to go to a one and 12, you could do that. It's really a local preference. And based on the discussion that we had at the last meeting, that's, that's why. And I think, I think we talked about, or some of the comments that were made were that let's sort of dip our toe in the water of, you know, let's check this out, let's see how it might work. And so in trying to respond to that comment, I wrote it in a way that would give the flexibility to planning and zoning, subject to meeting the criteria under development plan review. And if you, if you decided over time that, or if you decide today for that matter, that you'd like it to just be a minimum of three and 12, there's nothing wrong with that. That's purely a, an option in this community, however you want your roofs to slope.
Is there, is there a lot of other places that are saying you can't, you know, like board? Like, is there a lot of other towns doing that? Other towns, I mean, you know, open places all around, but I'm not paying attention to a lot. Most of my houses have a sloped roof or we're doing modern. So I don't know if there's anything in other towns or other cities that are saying, oh, you gotta be at least this or this and then you don't want to get like a big triangle looking thing with the super pitch either. But, you know, is there anything that stops us? I know the three 12 was just that people used to build a cheaper house with the three 12 pitch. I don't see people starting to build economical, cheap homes in this town right now. You know, we just had two, you know, very good architects in front with bringing plans ahead. And, you know, really we're looking at parking and things like that, but every one of the architectural execution seems to be, you know, top-notch. So maybe we should just let people, you know, we're already at the flat, we have a four or a flat. What's the difference if we go to three or two or, you know, stuck on, you know, if it's going to look good there. Or there, you know, but I guess you could have someone show up with cheap 12, but oh, nothing to it. But it doesn't seem worth it to me.
Mr. Chairman, I may, you may recall, for a long time, all we were, all we allowed in the town was a four 12 pitch. We didn't allow flat roofs. So when the more modern style was coming into effect, folks would have to do the four 12 pitch and then hide it with their parapet if they wanted to go to look, you know, like a modern look. So eventually the town started getting so many requests about that, we decided to change the code to now that of flat roofs. Well, the biggest concern with the flat roofs was making sure that people weren't building like balconies and going out on their balconies and things like that. So when we went to the flat roofs, we, you know, have a parapet requirement and things like that. So I think one of the things that when this issue came up was to, like Mr. Corey said, sort of see about somewhere in between the completely flat, not completely flat, but in the four 12 pitch to see how it goes and create the flexibility here. Because I think once we start getting less and less, like two or even one, then we go back to the concern we have with the flat roofs of, do now we need to have parapets? Do now we not need, like, and how does that work? So I think that went into our discussion about, well, if we allow three 12 and we allow it by special exception, then this board that doesn't do architectural review could look at it and be like, yeah, that looks good and we're good with it. If we have a desire in the future to go with even less of a slope than that, I think that's something that we can look at doing under the same type of language. But then we start getting back towards that whole flat roof discussion, which I think we really want to avoid.
Yeah. Thank you for the explanation. I agree with you. I totally agree too.
I think that comment, dip our toe into the water makes a lot of sense because it's new to us. And when I sat in the audience and listened to it the first time, I don't think there was a consensus here on, you know, this pitch that's being described. So this can evolve to whatever it wants later. So I'd be in favor of it, Mr. Chairman.
I know that the project that was shown as the example in October was a very attractive house, the kind that will get approval, you know, every time here. What we don't know is there something going to show up. Let's do it this way and see. And it could be a year from now, we're saying, this is silly to have as a special exception. Let's just incorporate it into the code. Because the review criteria is the same. So technically, under the current code, we could turn one down, you know, because of the criteria. But to have a special exception kind of puts a, maybe not a stop sign up there, but a caution sign from a developer. You better do it right because you've got this one more hurdle here. And I think it may result in better designs. So I'm in favor of proceeding as Corey's outlined here.
Yeah, dip in our toe. Let's check it out. We're probably going to come up with this house in a while. We look at it and then we can get a feel for it, yeah.
Well, no, we get a few of these floors and it could be, this is the only one that comes in, you know. It's a, it's a certain taste and it's got to fit a certain, a lot. This lot, a common. This lot accommodated it well. I don't know that everyone will. And we've had very few single-family houses built in this town over the last few years.
Maybe not single-story.
Single-story, yes, thank you. Single-story homes, because there's a tendency to want to maximize the house on the lot. So this may be the only one we see. But I'd like to keep from holding these people up from being able to proceed. So can we get this on, because it's still two steps. We've got to approve language in January, and then that's got to go two times to the commission?
You could approve, the, the language that, in the backup materials, is actually the language that would appeal, appear in, once we put it into a, you know, standard ordinance format. So if this commission is good with the language, you can approve it now, and then it can go to the town commission for first reading, maybe in January. That would get some advertising stuff, things like that.
Let, let's do that. That would be, I'll make that motion that we proceed with this. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Yeah, it, it doesn't have to come back here. This is commissioner comment opportunity. Usually the comments about this time is, I've got other places to be. But, but anybody want to have anything they want to bring up?
So I want to make.
I'd like to, real quick, we're going down line, just two, a couple of things. I think some of the, one of the things I'm seeing and continue to see right in my own world right there, when a project starts construction, why does it have to linger so long? Right? You know, just Steve across from us, you know, on satellite, Brian, the house that you built, it's ridiculous what's going on there. That house is just, you know, they seem to work a little bit, then don't work. It's probably been under construction for two or three years now, right? And that's just the foundation has been under construction. The house hasn't been under construction. So I know that, I know that the commission's looking at this, but we need to find some resolution to this because you can't start a project and then just let it sit. I mean, it just makes no sense. I get we had COVID and everything else like that. That's my first comment. The second comment, Randy, I think, does a stop, and Randall Stoff and his group do a good job of kind of pushing, you know, he pushed the garage back a little bit to allow for some more parking in the driveway area. One of the things you keep talking about, Rick, and I don't know, Stephen, the house you built for him, but that's kind of one of his trademarks. He designed my house. I have a full courtyard, right? And, 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 and I could probably park six cars, seven cars in my whole driveway back. It's nice, I know it's not always practical, it's nice not to see a car from the road, right? And so he does a little of that. So that's just a general comment. The last thing is, is there any way we could get, just for like the site plan, the elevations and the landscape? Can we get a full scale? Ask the op, give us a full, just those three things? So we're not looking, I can't see this landscape plan. I can't read the landscape plan well. Can we ask them for full sets of plans for just those, the site plan, the, the elevation, the building elevation and the landscape? Because I, I just personally can't see it. Thank you.
All, all good comments. Next month, they're trying to schedule a workshop, which would be between us and the town commission. And that is the time where we would, as this group, and need to bring up, because to proceed with new things on our table, we have to have their consensus. And I'd really like to get some looking at the parking. I'd like to look at it in where we have these different districts, the single families and the multifamilies, the, the overlay districts, and make sure that we cover it. It's an important point.
Absolutely.
A little history on the timing is that this commission, before you were part of it, recommended to the town that they not, the town commission, that they not extend the dates for construction and building permit extensions. That the way it was is that, once you went over, Stephen can tell me what it is. Is it a year and a half? Anyway, then you had to come back every six months before.
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
And, and, and the P and Z's opinion, that was good. That kind of made the developer responsible. In the town commission's view is, they were getting bombarded with these extensions. And so they changed it and.
Everything's changed now, like, things just don't roll fast. But I agree with you on the other house, you know, by you. But now that, that, but like, you know, getting materials and everything, but building the box shouldn't, shouldn't be, you're building a box, you know, building the shell, it shouldn't. But I don't know how to address any of this to try to push people or do anything because then when you get the house done, I mean, people lived in fifty-four and their garage doors still don't work. I think they're, because they didn't get the motors for the garage door. You know, like, we, we end up with like crazy stuff these days, like, oh, a gate for an elevator got lost. I was trying to get a CO and keep getting.
A pile of dirt, fence knocked down, looking terrible. My dog has probably eaten enough chicken bones out of it when they do show up. They can tell you, you know, I'm like, but they're just, it's unsightly, it's been years of unsightly, just site work. I mean, just getting the foundation.
First, it was like a half a house sitting there for a little bit, wasn't it?
It was a half a house.
Yeah, it was a half house. Then they finally got rid of them, they got figured out.
Exactly.
Sheen had changed, we gotta go higher.
Just the whole thing, I was like, wow.
So Kelly, can you make a note that these are two things we'd like to have on the workshop agenda? Because I, I think the building permit, construction period, not permit, but construction period, was considered to be a COVID issue, and now we're past COVID. And we don't, as I told the town commission, and I think Carolyn, you were on the commission at the time, is that we don't, we want builders to put crews on Ocean Ridge jobs first. We don't want them, sending them up to Manalapan or, or down to Gulfstream because they have more time in Ocean Ridge. We want to hold their feet to the fire. Sorry, Stephen, but.
No, but I don't know, you should check, I don't know, Manalpan has a timeline on their construction. I don't believe they do.
Yeah.
And they do, what's their timeline there?
Twenty-four, thirty-six months.
Twenty-four, thirty-six. I mean, that's a little better than, I think it was a year, like, a year and then a six-months extension. And I think these guys over here can still, like, we have problems now, even though COVID's over, we still can't get concrete. You used to call up and get concrete the next day, now if you fail an inspection, you're waiting for two weeks and play from poor floor of man.
No, that's okay. But this other situation, come on, it's just.
I don't know.
It's just.
We should figure that out or talk about it. Things are a mess.
So, Mr.?
Please.
Oh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So in June of this year, what the town commission did was, historically, the town's local time for duration of construction was two years for single-family residential estates, one year for all others. So the bigger residential estate homes had up to two years, everybody else had one year. So in June, the commission amended that and made it across the board a two-year timeframe for everybody, with the ability to give one six-month extension from the building official. Now, you could also still go to the town commission and get further extension once you had your two years and a six-month extension. That is in place under the current ordinance till December thirty-first of twenty twenty oh five, where then it will be repealed and it will fall back to the two-year for, I believe, for the residential estate, but then one year for everybody else. And that's what they did in June. Keep in mind, this is a local duration of construction. Under the Florida Building Code, once you get your permit, that permit is good for six months. And once you get an inspection, it automatically renews for another six months. So this is just a local requirement that the town has, as opposed to, a lot of cities just follow the Florida Building Code. And as long as you're getting those inspections, your permit continues to get renewed without any limitation on the total duration of construction.
So we're tougher than a lot of places.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's consistent, I think, with other coastal towns that have an ultimate limitation on the duration of construction. But some of the bigger cities, as long as you've got your building permits still in effect, you can get as long as you want. Most people realistically try not to because then you're just.
Burning money.
Burning money, yeah.
And sitting around.
What's, what's the redress for the builder who doesn't complete within the timeframe?
Well.
We give them time.
This gets into the fun, the fun legal issue because if they came before the town commission, the town commission said, we're not giving you any further extensions, then, then technically, they need to remove what's been constructed to date. And as you can imagine, that kind of puts us in a tough situation if you have a home that's been substantially constructed. Best example is sixty-two seventy-three. So, you know, ideally, the way it works is you have someone who knows that this is the local duration. Push come to shove, the town could ultimately rely on that and tell someone, now you got to take down what you want to do, what you've done, especially if the project's not as far along as it really should be. Sixty-two seventy-three had some really unique circumstances. So that was, we handled that as sort of a separate way. But yeah, it, it's a tough situation if, if that issue does come up.
So is the condition of an extension ever required a bond?
That's what we have done, and that's what we did with sixty-two seventy-three. They had to provide a, I think it was like four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar bond. It's actually a letter of credit, so that if they didn't need the new duration of construction, the town could execute on that letter of credit, pull out that money, and then the town could go to hell.
Thank you. Commissioner, do you have something to add?
I just want to question Carolyn Cassidy, seven hundred and ten. One thirteen Island Drive South is what we're talking about, right?
I think it is.
So that's Bella Holmes, who's building that. When he started the project, was our letter of credit requirement in place for demolition? Wasn't, when was, do you know when that was?
I don't know.
Right, what's bidding? Because he's got, he's building a six-one oh seven now. He's bidding on another project on Hudson, I know. Has any enforcement been?
We can look into that, I just don't know.
I know, it has just sat there.
And it's, it's just, it's dirt, it's, it's just, it's at this beginning stages where it just is a disaster. It's, it just sits there.
Can I speak real quick? At the moment, we have, they had given, given the approval to go forward, but they let things just sit. So right now, they're on hold, they're told no further construction. They actually have to come back before planning zone because their work has expired.
So are they on schedule to come back?
Soon as they submit their application.
So it just sits there like that until they resubmit?
We can, we can discuss it internally, but it might be something that we need to do for community standards.
Yes. I mean, because Steve built a beautiful home right across the street. I assume when the wind's blowing out of the west, you know, you're getting dirt on your house, et cetera, you know?
I think that, yeah.
It's just a disaster.
Well, oh, here's my question, is you're saying the fence is blown on, like?
Yeah.
Maybe we need to go by and just yell at him to go fix his fence and clean his site up there. You know, I mean, I've gotten yelled at before. So I've yelled at many times in life. So maybe we need to at least get him to clean it up and secure it and get his green screen up. The, the green screen doesn't work on this, I mean, it's like we have right now. I mean, have, yeah. Everything, this is one of my personal homeless backyard right now.
David, I think you answered commissioner comments.
Yes.
In words, words of wisdom, as you, as you depart.
I, I have very few words of wisdom. I think current members here are highly qualified, and P and Z's in good shape, and I've enjoyed being here. And I believe this, Kelly, you can help me out on this. This is the best of this, my reservation. So it's been a pleasure, and I look forward to seeing people at the workshop, I guess, huh? I think you, thank you.
Thank you.
We know we'll have a friend on the commission. Thank you. Do we have a call for a German?
So moved.
Okay, anything else, Stephen, did you, Kelly?
Yes, I did.
Okay. So moved, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your time and service. Thank you.
Okay.